Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting of Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. Please stand as you are able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Marchoska.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Cos.
Here.
Trustee Gallagos.
Here.
Assistant Manager Monroe.
Here.
Attorney Pickroll.
Here.
Also present Clerk Stenzel.
Thank you. President's Report tonight. Upcoming village meetings include April 7th Riverside TV Commission at the Village Hall, April 8th Landscape Advisory Commission at the Village Hall, April 8th again Board of Police and Fire Commissioners at 43 East Quincy Street, April 10th Preservation Commission at the Village Hall, April 14th Sesquicentennial Ad Hoc Committee at the Village Hall, and two weeks from tonight, the Village Board will meet again here at the Village Hall on April 17th. Some upcoming events and activities in the village. Tomorrow, Friday, April 4th, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Quincy Community Center, there will be an informative presentation hosted by the Riverside C-4 team, featuring a representative from the nonprofit Citizens Utility Board. Topics will include an overview of residential rooftop solar, details on how electrical aggregation program works, and information about opt-in community solar. Whether you're a homeowner, renter, or simply interested in learning more about solar options, this session will inform residents of energy choices. On Thursday, April 10th, Flashlight Egg Hunt at Indian Gardens, 7:30 to 8:15 PM. This is for teenagers. We're hosting a brand-new egg hunt exclusively for 11- to 15-year-olds, giving older children an exciting opportunity to join in the fun. Participants only need to bring a flashlight and a bag or basket for their eggs. No pre-registration is required. The event is free. And then on Saturday, April 12th, for the younger children, is the annual egg hunt at Big Ballpark at 10 a.m. sharp. Kids ages zero to 10 can scramble for eggs and snap a photo with the bunny before or after the hunt. No pre-registration is required. Just bring your basket and join the fun. On Saturday, May 3rd, at Indian Gardens, there is a pickleball tournament. Register now as this event is filling up quickly. Arbor Day proclamation. I have a proclamation designating Arbor Day to maintain recognition as a Tree-Centric USA community. The village must adhere to several foundational standards, including the annual observation of Arbor Day. Every year, village forester Mike Collins organizes an Arbor Day celebration where a tree is planted within the village. This year's planting will be a bald cypress tree donated by the Frederick Law Olmsted Society, the Olmsted Society of Riverside, that will be planted in the Repton-Southcoat Triangle. Last year, the village will observe, this year, the village will observe Arbor Day on April 25th, 2025. The celebration includes the planting of the tree with Ames Elementary School and the help of David Kuzneris and Save a Tree, who will be donating saplings for the grade schoolers to plant. Additionally, the village wishes to recognize Ryan Buckler from Ames Elementary School for his ongoing efforts to engage his students in meaningful educational activities such as this Arbor Day celebration. This time, I'd like to read the proclamation for Arbor Day. Presidential Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity, and whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use, and whereas trees can beautify our parks and streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, whereas the Village of Riverside plans to plant a bald cypress tree at Repton-Southcoat Triangle to celebrate this day. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Doug Pollock, Village President, proclaim the day of April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and woodlands, dated this third day of April, 2025. Thank you. And that concludes my president's report. Our village manager, Jessica Francis, is on a well-deserved vacation this week, and sitting in for her is our assistant village manager, Ashley Monroe. Ashley, manager's report, please.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for having me. The only thing I have to report this evening is that recently, there is a report that's come out from an online database called Niche, where Riverside was included in one of the top 20 communities in Illinois to live, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's continuing to make this a wonderful place, including certainly our bodies of governance and our wonderful residents. So, thank you very much, and we'll continue to make this a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Department, Board, and Commission reports, we, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Clerk Stenzel, please read the consent agenda.
Resident comments?
We do have resident comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm completely out of order here. Resident comments on non-agenda items. Are there any residents who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Please come to the podium and give us your name and what you're here for.
Hi, good evening, President Pollock, Trustees, and Village Board. My name is Gina Chap. I am the owner of Next Level Wellness at One Riverside Road in the Arcade Building. We've been in our location for almost a year now. I've lived in Riverside for over 19 years and take great pride in being part of this community, both as a resident and a local business owner. I am a registered nurse with 19 years of experience with a background that includes pediatrics, adult home health, and infusion therapy. I also served as a school nurse in District 96 for eight years, which gave me the privilege of caring for many families right here in our community. I hold a master's in nursing, and I'm currently pursuing my family nurse practitioner postmaster certificate at Chamberlain University, and I'm also part of the Riverside Chamber of Commerce. My commitment to safe, licensed, and ethical care is what guides my career and my business, and I'm here to raise a serious concern about a neighboring business, Prestige Spa, which is located directly next to my office. They are actively advertising and performing services that go far beyond those of a typical spa, including Botox, IV hydration therapy, laser treatments, vitamin injections, and even teeth whitening. These are regulated medical and dental services that require proper licensure and oversight by qualified healthcare providers. Performing these procedures without appropriate supervision poses a risk to public safety. What's also troubling is that the owner of Prestige Spa told the landlord she was opening a dental office, which is not what's operating there now, although she's advertising teeth whitening, which is a dental service. She personally offered to sell me vials of Botox, even though she's not a pharmacy or a licensed medical distributor. This is extremely concerning and likely illegal. I also found that the business appears to operate two different websites, each advertising slightly different services and branding, and that kind of inconsistency can be confusing to the public and makes it harder to understand exactly what's being offered and what licensure they have. I've already contacted the Department of Professional Regulation, and I've also been in communication with Assistant Village Manager Ashley Monroe and CC Manager Jessica Francis to document my concerns and share supporting materials, including one of their service flyers. I respectfully ask the village to investigate whether Prestige Spa has the necessary licensure, medical, and dental oversight to perform these advanced services. They applied for a spa business license, which is not the same as a med spa or a dental office. Considering, I would like for you guys to also consider implementing a local ordinance or zoning restriction to help regulate medical aesthetics or dental-related services are allowed to operate. A local ordinance wouldn't just help ensure compliance, it would help prevent oversaturation of highly specialized service in a small community like ours. When too many businesses offer the same regulated services in such a close proximity, it can dilute the quality of care, confuse consumers, and create an uneven playing field for providers like me who follow the rules. Other municipalities have adopted similar measures to protect residents, promote ethical business practices, and prevent oversaturation of these specialized services. I also want to share a concern that feels personal and professional. Both of our businesses are literally located, they're in the same building and on the third floor, literally next to each other. If someone in the community were to visit Prestige Spa and have a bad experience and tell others, "Yeah, it was the spa on the third floor," there's a real risk that they could be talking about my business by mistake. This kind of confusion could harm my reputation, one that I've worked hard to build through safe, licensed, and ethical practice. I'm proud of the trust I've earned with my clients and the village, and I just want to ensure that the trust is protected. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I'm happy to provide any documentation or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and I'm glad to hear that you've been in contact with staff, as well as the state of Illinois regulatory agencies who are likely to have the most jurisdiction there. But our staff will continue to look at it in terms of any village ordinances or anything. Again, staff would organize that and bring that to our attention. So, thank you for taking the time to come to our meeting and sharing that information.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on non-agenda items this evening? Seeing none, now we'll move to the consent agenda. Clerk Stenzel.
Approved voucher list of bills, April 3rd, 2025. Approved Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes, March 20th, 2025. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Historical Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, February 17th, 2025. Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, February 26th, 2025. A resolution authorizing a $750,000 inter-fund transfer from the General Fund and a $125,000 inter-fund transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to fund capital expenditures. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a license agreement between the Village of Riverside and Joe McGuire, doing business as Mr. Souvenir. An ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter I of the Village Code relating to certificates of compliance. An ordinance approving a settlement agreement.
Thank you. Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Marchoska.
Yes.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cos.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. We have no items under Department, Board, and Commission reports, so I'll move on to pending business. Continued discussion relating to food trucks and mobile vending. Assistant Manager Monroe.
All right, well, thank you. This conversation continues the last meeting that we talked about this on February 20th. We reviewed some of the challenges that we have with regulation or concerns that were brought to us by community businesses. At that time, the board had recommended that we reach out to the Riverside Chamber of Commerce, as well as hear from our Economic Development Commissioners. So, staff did reach out to both of those entities. The Chamber of Commerce passed the message, essentially what the Village Board saw at their meeting, to its members, and we received a couple of mixed comments. You know, there were some respondents that were in favor of food trucks, some that wanted specifically healthy food trucks, some identifying public and private locations with larger parking lots that could be good spaces for food trucks to park if there is interest. A lot of them are in the Central Business District, and we just haven't seen a lot of interest. Anecdotally, we haven't seen a lot of interest on the staff side outside of special events and people coming into downtown for just regular business. There were mixed opinions on the licensing fees. Some expressed that if it was fair and reasonable, comparable to other community fees, that they'd be in favor of additional fees outside of a $100 business license. Others communicated that they have, you know, essentially that there should be no cost for them to operate in town. We also expanded the conversation to Economic Development Commission, who, you know, again, mixed reviews here. They understood the value that food trucks bring to a community, the interest, the potential draw of complementary business uses pairing together with a food truck, and they want to be known, you know, our community to be known as a good place to do business. They did express some concern over a potential lack of accountability, the potential for any kind of litter or trash accumulation. They brought up the issue of parking issues. So if there was a place that had a concentrated area, if there was somebody to locate in downtown, where would people park to go and, you know, participate in that, get some food there? They didn't express an opinion on the license fees that were proposed, so we have our current model of $100 for an annual license fee at the board meeting in February. It was proposed to raise that to $1,000 for the annual operation to offset the places for eating tax. They expressed also that their, you know, concern is that there isn't an offsetting revenue for that if we want it. Their response also was just to poll our restaurants, and so staff went out to the restaurants to ask what their opinions of food truck were. There were many of our restaurants. They talked to seven of them. They said, again, "Great idea. We're not opposed to people starting their own businesses. We, of course, like to have the idea of more variety in town. People should be able to start businesses." That being said, they weren't happy about the idea of a food truck being parked immediately outside their business. Whether they serve the same type of food or not, it didn't necessarily matter. They weren't bothered by the food trucks on Harlem. That seemed to be okay with them in a commercial district. They were, some were surprised that the food truck was able to operate for as long as it is in the manner it has, and again, they just want to make sure that it's kind of a fair playing field. So whatever we determined, they were aware of, for instance, distance requirements in other municipalities and Chicago and the like that would kind of provide a little bit of relief from that immediate exposure. They didn't have any opinions on special events uses or any specific requirements. I'll note before we go into just the questions I have for the board in order to continue the conversation and kind of narrow down where we are with this. I did talk to another new business today, asking about the opportunity to operate a food truck in town. They have an awareness of the currently operating food truck. They are using a model of, you know, polling their audience, their customers, about where they should come, where they should go for business, and people were telling them to come to Riverside. They want the food here. They want to try something new. You know, whatever the case is, they seem to be aware of health code requirements, of, you know, sensitivity of being right in front of a business. They're not sure where they would be locating, and we have yet to get a business license application for them, but I wanted to express that it is something that's drawing attention. Also, Oak Park just discussed this at their most recent board meeting. They are very much having the same conversation as been had here as far as distance requirements or other kinds of regulation for what is a very similar model to what we have at this moment. So, I have a couple of questions for the board, and I can certainly take questions from the packet information as well. But essentially, we're looking at three things as to whether staff's recommendation for a start on regulations for special events and incorporating food trucks or better defining them within that process is something you want to do, and then determining whether there's a length of time for that special event process. The other two questions would be, if we go forward with that, are there other districts or specific areas where they should operate, and is there a distance that we'd want to follow if we do? So just some general questions. I think it'll help us further narrow down and come back to the board with some more concrete, maybe, language to react to and present. So, I'll take any questions.
Of course.
Yeah?
Did you survey the restaurants on Harlem about whether it's okay to have the food trucks in Harlem?
We had the comments and concerns from the closest proximity, but I didn't make it out to the ones further up north. But, oh, you know what? I did actually speak to them at one point, and they weren't concerned at the time, but that being said, you know, we didn't talk about it in the context of them being parked within an immediate vicinity of their location. So it was just sort of like, you know, they knew they were there. They have their other business operations that they're focused on, so it was light commentary on that. But farther up north, I didn't make it to, like, Asiano, that's up in the Business District one up there, so.
Any other questions for staff before we address the questions that staff has for us?
I do have a question. Is an ice cream truck considered also a food truck under this definition?
Ice cream trucks are currently in our ordinances as prohibited vehicles, so we can't have a roaming ice cream vendor in a vehicle currently. So if we wanted to make a change and permit them or permit them in a particular location, we could make that adjustment if we're touching the code otherwise.
And if an ice cream truck was parked in a certain spot, then it goes into this definition? Is that right? Is there a park?
It's, I have to check the exact code language. It's odd because the food vendor explicitly calls out ice cream trucks as prohibited. So we just have to look at the exact language to make a determination. Our reading of the code has, to this point, been that if someone wants to operate an ice cream truck, we haven't been able to permit it.
Okay.
Was it an ice cream truck that, I mean, was it a food truck that said they were interested in coming to Riverside?
Yes, yes. So, other cuisine.
And perhaps before we address the specific questions that staff has for us, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this topic. And I see none. Okay, so, staff is asking us a couple of questions regarding special event fees and participation. Should the village create specific regulations for food trucks as part of the special event process? If so, what should the fees and structure be for food trucks participating in special events? And staff has suggested, as a starting point for the discussion, $30 per event, flat fee for food trucks participating in special events with no additional application fee required, and bundled events where it's more than one, more than one weekend occurrence or whatever. A single-event application can cover up to one to 12 events by the same food truck as long as the vendor and purpose are the same and all appearances are included within the original application. So I guess, does, do the trustees have any additions, objections, support, modifications for any of that?
I'm fine with a $30 fee. When you say "per event," is that their own event or is that an event like an organization would throw, we'll just say like Lions Club has an event, special event, and they have a food truck? Is that considered a separate event than what you're referring to?
Yeah, so it would be, I guess it would be a visit, right? So if they are here for, you know, Riverside Arts Weekend, and they're going to be there the three days, that would be considered the event or visit in that regard. If they're here on a weekly basis, they do a one-off event, it would be just that one event.
Okay, and currently, when an organization does file for an event permit, the application, it would list any of that stuff on that, right?
Correct.
And we do require right now insurance, et cetera?
Yes, for special event processes. So this would mirror our current special event process with just a little bit more detail being provided. If a food truck, say, see, there's, you know, some community group that is holding an event that, say, I'll use the sports teams for an example, right? So they have their games on a weekend day, and they'd love to bring in food for families as they watch. That could be an example of this, where they could do it one time, they could do it for the whole season through that event application process. We know it's the same vendor, we know they have insurance, and they're going to be here every Saturday in this spot from 12 to 2:00, or, you know, whatever the case is. And that could be, then you could get into that bundled event, right? It's the same organization hosting the same group for that purpose. If they want to bring in another food truck, then it would be a different application for that food truck, for the new one. Or if it's the same food truck participates in an event with the sports teams, but it also is with the Lions Club, those are two different events, right?
Okay.
But.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that's kind of the different ways that we could see it, and it would just be an extension. We would model it with an extension of our existing special event structure.
And does that mean that it's up to the hosts of the event to cover the food truck costs, or are they passing that on to the food truck? Or is it up to them?
I think that would be a private choice if they want to host, and the hosts are saying, "Well, we'll cover your event fee in order to get you here." That's their choice. Or a food truck may say, "Yeah, it's worth 30 bucks. That's why it's, you know, that was why that was proposed, to encourage compliance, essentially, and saying, it's not nothing, but it's not overly onerous to say, "It's $100 for you to come to this event," because, you know, it's not always, it's not necessarily that much for even a special event application. It's a pretty small to reasonable fee.
Yeah.
So the special event applications would always be completed by a resident?
It could be a business that's hosting a special event, so.
Like somebody with a Riverside address. It wouldn't be the food truck.
It could be. So if the food truck is, so say we have, if the food truck was coming to a location that is likely private property, if it was on public property, it was probably going to be in conjunction with one of our permitted aware special events, right? Somewhere on public property. If they're landing somewhere on private property, say, you know, say there's somebody that wants to go up to, you know, Shining Smiles is doing a food truck, they would work with the property owner to get approval for being on that lot, and then the food truck or the person who's bringing them there would fill out the application, so. And then the food truck or the person who's bringing them there would fill out the application, so.
But if it was a residence, it could be on the street in front of their house?
Well, typically, when residents want to have a food truck, we haven't prevented that activity, and we could still continue to, you know, to avoid that if they are parking on private property. So, we always advise that if people are doing some type of special event, that they would use their private driveway of, you know, so- somewhere that they have. If they are parking on the street and they're not hosting the general public, if it's a family event, it's a catered private family affair that's parked on the street, hopefully legally. So, we could make, you know, we can better define that, just noting that that's a question. If you want us to have that as an opportunity for people to, to host them. I think the intent is really to structure commercial activity or activities in partnership with, with like, community groups that are hosting the general public for, for things.
I understand. I, I do feel more comfortable if a food truck was parked on the private property. I could see that if we've had block parties, that street's going to be blocked off, so there's not going to be, you know, traffic going through. So, I can understand if, if they did have that for, for the block parties.
And it would be in conjunction, if it was a block party, it would be in conjunction with their block party application. So, they, it wouldn't need this extra piece of it. It would just go in, in coordination with that block party.
Okay.
I have another question. So, they can't just roll into town and open for business and sell tacos?
Yes.
What's a special event? Is a special event anytime the food truck comes to town?
Yes, so.
Can't just roll into town?
Correct, so that's what we would want, right? We would want to know where are they, where are they going to be? What's the duration, and do they have insurance? And some evidence of healthcare, you know, health inspection. That's the idea. So, not onerous regulation, but just an awareness so that if they are parking that somewhere on, you know, the wrong side of the street, we can communicate with them in some way potentially and say, "Oh, you need, maybe parking right, not right at the corner would be the best space from a safety perspective." That's, that's the idea, is just a better communication too.
So, I have a question with, so with regard to the food truck we have operating right now, does this mean that that food truck would only be able to operate during special, special events applications? No, so there's a different situation for that? Okay.
Yeah, so, that kind of goes with that question too. Is, is for that, say, we're saying, "Well", you know, "For someone who's licensed in, in town", or say that, that's not relevant, the licensing of, the same way we do it now isn't relevant anymore, we can say, "The food truck can operate under these circumstances, and they just need to fill out this application, and we'll consider it a special event", right? So, Armarts can say, "We have a special event with this particular vendor. They're going to be here these days, on these weeks, and we'll know for that duration that that's what's, you know, that that's what's occurring. If it's allowed by, you know, our policy and our zoning, then they can proceed." And, and we just have a record essentially of what their operating hours are.
Okay.
And then it looks like twelve is the cutoff, they can only come twelve times?
Well, we can, we can pair it however you like. So, if their twelve visits are, and, and this was just for talking points, right? So, if we say, "It's twenty-four, it's thirty-six, it's, you know, fifty-two", whatever you want to land on. Twelve events was kind of thought about, like, if they come once a month or every week for four months, you know, for the summer, then you have that flexibility. If it's saying, "We're here Friday and Saturday, that's our event, and you do it every other week", that's spread out kind of throughout the year for, for different weeks. So, it's really a, a flexibility that was thrown in for the purposes of discussion essentially, and so we can adjust as needed. But remember, the visit could be one day, it could be three days, it could be five days. So, we have to be aware of that. Or it could be a certain number of days, you know, that, that in total. We've had discussions at the board level about that before as well. So, I think it just comes down to, is the special event process something we're comfortable with monitoring for this purpose? And then, is there a duration of their stay that we feel comfortable with through that special event process?
So, then the food truck that comes at, comes to the farmer's market? So, they would, they would make a bundled event request, or is that different?
Yeah, it would just be in coordination with the, the farmer's market, that's our special event. It would just come in through that special event application. We could make exceptions as part of our code revision as well and saying, "Up to twelve or as indicated by an approved special event application." I mean, it, it, it has flexibility.
How many, how many farmer's markets do we have each year?
How many farmer's markets do we have?
Anybody remember?
Ah, May, May, early October? So.
It's twelve to sixteen, I think, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll find that out.
Okay, okay.
So, is the board general, and again, we're, we're not making any final decisions tonight. We're looking for a direction for staff to proceed potentially with an ordinance, or if you want them to pursue more information, we can give that direction as well. But in regards to the first question, the suggestion is defining an event as three consecutive days, and that there could be up to twelve events per year. And is the board comfortable with that as a kind of a starting point to continue? I, I would like to know the number of farmer's markets, just so we're not hamstringing ourselves in that regard.
I think there's twenty.
Twenty, first week of June through.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, my question is, if a special event is four days, does, you know, it doesn't make sense to say that the food truck can only be there three of them if everybody else is there for four? I, I guess what I'm looking at is one B, like, how long can they stay? That's a separate question than the, as part of the special events process. Is that correct, or is that in conjunction with the special? Oh, it is in conjunction. Because I, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, I can't off the top of my head think of an event, special event that lasts for four days, but, you know, it doesn't seem, it seems like it should be able to last whatever the special event length is. Not, not necessarily put a, put a fine point on how many days, right? I don't, I don't know, I, I can't think of something that would last longer than three days. But, the other thing I'm thinking about for recurring events is, you know, I'm thinking, you know, a Riverside resident doesn't, you know, doesn't want to do a brick and mortar store yet, but they start a food truck, and everybody wants this food truck at, at their event kind of thing. And of course, we want to encourage this food truck, and we want to encourage it. So, again, I get concerned about putting a number on it only because what if we get some really successful things going on and, and, you know, we don't want to, again, I don't want to, I don't want to cut us off before we start kind of thing.
I, I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but I think what, if, if, there's this clarification, a food truck, a particular, you know, Joe's Food Truck, they could open in this village every day of the year, as long as they have different sponsors.
Okay.
So, the food truck is not, itself can be here as long as they've got someone sponsoring their event, right?
Well, but if we say they can only be here for twelve total events a year, or whatever?
Right, the way it's written. But, let's say Charity Number One has twelve events, and they hire Joe's Food Truck for all twelve events. Charity B has twelve events, and they hire Joe's Food Truck.
Okay.
That's okay, Joe can be here as much as he wants.
Okay.
Provided that the sponsor of that and the sponsor that's being limited, not, not the actual food truck.
And how does this affect the current business model over at Armarts and their food truck that they have on a regular basis?
That's the question I have, is I, I, how often do they want to, does this?
That's not a special event, that's an everyday, normal.
So, that would be under a different ordinance, correct?
So, essentially, what we would do is, they have an existing business license under our current operating mode. You know, we would have to make a determination as to at what point they fall into this requirement. So, if, say they, you know, either renew their business license next year, because right now they can just operate anywhere that they have access to private property. If they renew it next year, or don't renew it next year, if Armarts says, "I would like this business, this food truck to operate on my property for this set of time and does our special event application", they, they can get approval to do that for whatever period of time.
But let's say.
We allow, we would allow.
So, let's say, you know, like, at Armarts, it's, I, I can't remember exactly what it is, but let's say it's five days a week all year long. That, they would be able to do that under their special event?
No, well, it depends on the direction we take, right? So, it's either we establish a duration for special events, which may then reduce the amount of time they can repeatedly be in that same location. They, they wouldn't be able to be there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, right? Under a special event with a timeframe.
Well, it seems like that we're kind, in my mind, it seems like we're talking about two different things, and maybe we're talking about two different ordinances here, is that there's food trucks going along with special events, and then there's food truck partnerships with businesses. That might be a different. I guess in my head, what's going on with Armart over there, that requires a different process than a special event.
Well, that's.
It's my feeling.
I was going to ask that question, so that's really, I think, question number one for the board. Do you want to limit food trucks to special events only? Or do you want to allow businesses to have a food truck on their property on a regular basis?
Well, that's, that's two different questions. Because special events in my mind is on public property. Streets are closed, and we, we have Public Safety go out there and say, "Hey, you're using taxpayer dollar funding on this." Private property, that's private sector stuff. So, if, if I had a commercial lot, and I'm not ready to build my building yet, but a food truck comes to me and says, "You know what, I'd like to rent it, but I only want to have a truck there for a year", that's a private sector deal.
Right, so, the question is, does the board want to allow that or not?
The latter part that I just said?
The part where you can just have a food truck there, no event, it's just, you've got a food truck on your property.
On private property, yes.
In that hypothetical, you could have it in your driveway five days a week all year long.
If that's not zoned as commercial.
We would restrict it to commercial areas.
We could decide what district.
That would be a, a commercial business in a residential area, so that would be.
So, I think if, if, the way this is written up, it's really talking about special events.
Right.
That's good, we need to talk about that. But we also need to decide, do we want to allow food trucks, no event going on, just Armarts, somebody else has room on their private property?
Yeah.
We want to allow them, and under what circumstances? So, and maybe we need to give that direction to staff that, yes, we do, or no, we don't. If it's yes, we do, then I think staff needs to do some more research on that side of it, because this is just about special events. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I, I think I would like to see, I, I think what we've got here makes sense for special events, but I would also like to see something different for, you know, I, well, okay, I would personally say that if somebody has, like you're saying, a commercial lot and wants to make a deal with a food truck to be there for a year or however, I, I would personally be fine with that. I think that that's when we have to look into a little bit of the distances, when we start talking about how close to another business kind of thing. I think that that's where that might come into play. But I think that, you know, especially when you're talking about somebody who's done something to help draw more business to the area, that's a good thing. So, I would not want to restrict a private business on private property making an agreement with a food truck to operate there.
Is, is that, is the rest of the board in agreement with that?
Generally.
That we should carve out a, a separate set of regulations for food trucks? Let's call it a food truck business license rather than a food truck special event license?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Separate definition.
We can give that direction to staff, they can come back with us with what that regulatory scheme might look like.
The, the second question and third question, it's exactly that distinction as far as where do we want them to operate, right? So, for instance, special, say, special event food trucks, can they operate in all of our district, our zoning districts? Can they operate with a special event in a residential district? I would anticipate, because there's a lot of activity and other things in those areas, but it's your decision, as well as commercial zones, which is the current circumstance in those lots that you're talking about from a private perspective. So, I guess, direction on special events versus a business food truck.
So, again, a special event in my mind means public parking.
Well, not necessarily. Special event could be parked on your driveway.
But that's not a commercial area, though.
Right, that's, that's the question. So, for a special event food truck, do you want to limit that to commercial areas only? Or do you want to allow residents to be able to do that in their driveway when they're having a birthday party?
I would like to have that done on.
So, for special events.
As well.
Special event food trucks, I think we want to allow that in any district, any zoning district.
Yes, I agree.
But on a very limited basis, because it's, you know, we're going to limit the number of times you can do that. But for a business food truck, I'm guessing we want to limit those to commercial areas because it's an ongoing business enterprise.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Last one, about, exactly, about the distance requirements then. So, if, so let's say, I would anticipate this will focus on those commercial operating, regular appearance in a commercial district. We put up as an example that two-hundred-foot distance, three-hundred-foot distance. Emily has a couple of those charts to just remind you of kind of the area, right? The perimeter shown around this as a buffer are from, are the distance from the perimeter of those lot lines, right? So, this is down on Harlem Avenue. You have a hundred feet from the, the property lines is the exterior of that red bubble. Same thing on the two-hundred feet. You get to, that, that perimeter is two-hundred feet from the central part of the current Alfaro location, the corner there. And there's a three-hundred feet. So, I talked to our, our village planner about how we would determine the distances for, for this. The most practical standpoint of how we would plan to measure, whatever distance might be appropriate if we go with a distance, would be essentially a walking distance from, through our, through our mapping done to say, "This is a reasonable entrance point to the brick and mortar restaurant, to the entryway or, or general location of the proposed food truck." So, that, that's how we would approach it. We'd more eloquently describe that in a code for purposes of measurement, but those are some options for us. So, at this point, you know, walking distance may look borderline if you went with a three-hundred-foot buffer from the current location of a food truck to the closest brick and mortar restaurant. The two-hundred foot leaves a lot of room and, and would certainly be, you know, another buffer option, yeah.
Well, just based on the feedback.
Well, just based on the feedback we've gotten from Alfaro and from the Central Business District restaurants, like they said they would rather have it in Harlem and Alfaro would rather not have it at all. So I think that we would go with a 300-foot buffer. I mean, that would be a compromise. We can't just put all of them on Harlem, that's not fair.
Let, let me, let's take a step back here first, going back to our prior discussion. Let's talk about special event food trucks versus food truck businesses. So I'm going to guess, given your support of food truck events, special events, that, that distance separation would not apply to special events.
Correct.
Because it's limited time.
But it's not really limited if they can do it 36 times a year or-
Well, we haven't decided how many times they can do it.
Okay.
Well, that's to be determined. I mean, right now on the table is 12 three-day events, or 12 one-day events, or 12 two-day events. But that's open to discussion. So, so this question, I think, is more applicable to food truck businesses. They're there all the time, because now they really are competing with bricks and mortar stores, whereas a special event one is, you know, limited competition there, so.
Well, I guess, I guess, one of the things is, one of the complaints we have here is that it's a similar, it's both Mexican food, I wouldn't say that they're similar menus, but it's both Mexican food. You know, I don't, I don't know this for a fact, but Alfaro might love a cupcake food truck opening right near them, right? Like, because then people will be like, "Oh, let's go to Alfaro and then we'll get the cupcake." You know, like, so to say that, you know, like, I, I think, to say, there might need to be some wording of like a similar menu or a similar, because, you know, depending on what kind of food truck we're talking about, it might actually be beneficial to have it closer to them, rather than, you know, like for example, if it were some sort of, you know, a sushi truck that was parked at Armarts, Alfaro might not have as much of a problem with that. I also think, so, I don't know how much, how far into the weeds we want to get with similar menus and similar food and that kind of thing. But my thought is, the 300-foot, I don't think we can say it can only be on Harlem Avenue. I think we have to just say it's in commercial districts. The 300-foot might look okay there, but when we looked at it in the Central Business District, it was, it was very prohibitive. So to my mind, that 300 feet is way too big. I would be for definitely like 200 or less. But I also think it depends, and again, this gets into some, a tricky situation. It depends on what we're talking about. Like I said, like if a gourmet cupcake food truck wants to open up, you know, outside of London Ice Cream, they might not like that, but if, you know, like a hot dog stand opened up in front of London Ice Cream, they might be fine, you know, like I think it kind of does depend. And that, to me, starts to get in a really sticky situation.
And I look, oh, okay.
I want, I want to address that, because this is just one opinion and, and not necessarily a voting opinion, but we do not generally regulate what type of food a restaurant sells.
Right.
We don't get into that. If, if a bricks and mortar Mexican restaurant wants to go right next door to Alfaro or someplace else, they're allowed to do that.
Right.
So the real question is, are we creating an unfair playing field by allowing a food truck? And we address that through fees and make sure they pay their sales tax and things like that. But I would not recommend that we get into regulating in any way, shape or form the type of food a restaurant is, or food truck is selling.
I would just add, from a legal perspective, it's going to be very hard to describe that in a way that's going to be understandable and enforceable.
It'd be very subjective.
It's a matter of case, it's like regulating speech, it's, you know.
Right, yeah.
Trying to, trying to protect speeches. Is it religious or is it, yeah, exactly. That's how they-
You're not comfortable with that, why not?
Yeah, no, it's, but you know, obviously when we regulate, and this is, we're talking about a zoning regulation. It needs to be clear and understandable.
Sure.
So I think the, the better method, and this is what you're discussing, is you can permit them, but just decide on the distance in the area that you want and then, once you're comfortable with that, then, you know, permit whatever type of food truck business demands.
I think by allowing, by allowing or inviting trucks into the village, we are taking the risk at any point that it might be good for some and bad for others. And we're also taking on the risk that it is, there is a lower barrier to entry and exit for a truck than there is for a brick and mortar. And so certainly that may, it may be the case that a truck is able to come in and damage a brick and mortar business and then leave Riverside. That's, that's something, that's part of the complexity here that was identified by others in, in your canvassing. So I think, I agree, I agree with your point. I will want us, if we have to try to ask our village staff to police that.
Yeah, no.
And, and I look at it as, through the consumer's eyes of having the variety and having the competitiveness of, of, you know, restaurants just trying to better their product at all times. We've never had as many restaurants in our village as we do right now. I mean, I remember when we had one in our Central Business District. So the fact that we have so many now is, is really consumer-driven and that's what really will determine the competitiveness of them.
I mean, that's also, it's kind of ironic that now we're talking about allowing food trucks when we have such a robust restaurant industry here and we never allowed food trucks before.
I don't think food trucks wanted to be here before.
Riversideers like to eat.
It's part of what makes it a great place to live, right?
Yeah. That was a comment related to something I heard from one of the restaurants that said, and I hopefully pointed it out in the packet as well, that the opportunity for us to encourage investment in those building locations, we don't know what the impacts of freely allowing more mobile kinds of businesses would have as an impact on that, on that investment. You know, people do spend a lot of money to convert a, or, or just jump into a space that has already been a restaurant, but to make that ready and bring it up to code or do whatever they need to do is extensive. And so if you have a lot of, you know, freedom essentially to come and go as you please, the question was raised to me as to whether it would deter people from entering a, a building space if they should become available. We have the great benefit of the fact that there are very few vacancies in downtown especially. And, you know, if that's the case, do, do we end up with a lot of empty buildings and a lot of food trucks? And so that was, whether that's to be the case or not, there's certainly a benefit, obviously, in that variety. But if circumstances change, what does that look like? And, you know, would we have to readdress this at that time?
Are you suggesting that we limit how many food trucks can be on a lot at any given time?
Well, I'm not inferring any, anything, that's a good question for, you know, for the board, but-
Well, I think it's, it's hard to, it's hard for us to predict what's going to happen in the future at this point, but I think if we start with something, recognizing the fact that we may have to revisit it. We may, you know, like if we start saying, "Okay, we're going to allow food trucks and this is how we're going to do it." Yeah, we may have to a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, say, "Okay, we thought that was a good idea and now we didn't anticipate this, this and this." But I, I think we have to start somewhere. I think that, you know, like the general, you know, from my absolutely non-scientific talking to folks about what they thought about food trucks in town and stuff like that, people seemed pretty excited about the idea of there being a few food, food trucks around. So my thought would be that we would want to allow this and understanding that, you know, this is a new thing that we're trying and if, it may very well be something we have to revisit when we need to.
I am definitely empathetic to the position or the concern that there would be a disincentive to invest in a brick and mortar space if you are, you know, allowing free rein, you know, to food trucks under the, I guess, commercial license. So I would be in favor of a larger distance buffer under that situation, because the, the duration is not limited in time. With respect to those that would be under like the special event situation where it would be limited to, you know, what we have not yet determined, whether it be 12 or 20 or-
Right, yeah.
Et cetera. I think a smaller buffer would be appropriate because under that license or that it's special event scenario, it would not be an ongoing situation and it would be more of an experiment and very likely for, you know, a lot of these special events, it wouldn't be during, you know, normal business operating hours, the weekends. So that would be a distinction that I would draw on the commercial license versus special event.
Clerk Stenzel, could you go back to the buffer map at Quincy and Harlem? Yes, thank you. So the one on the right is 100 feet and the one on the left is 200 feet and that's measured from the property lines of the Alfaro property, right?
Correct.
Okay. So you could see, under the 100-foot, the, the Armarts property would be cleared and free. Under the 200, it would depend on whether you measure it property line to property line or whether you measure it property line to door or door to door. And that's a, a more involved discussion even. But, or you could have no distance requirement separation at all.
Okay, now, there is a building between Armarts and the building that Alfaro is in. If they were to open up a restaurant after there's already an existing food truck there, how would that affect that existing food truck business?
If your separation require, requirement was anything, adjacency would be prohibited, right? If you had a one-foot separation between properties, two adjacent properties could not have,
Yeah.
You could have a restaurant and a food truck.
Right, right. There, there just wouldn't be sufficient room for that buffer, for, in any, really any amount.
Something else I'll throw out for your consideration, which I'm hesitant to do and I probably regret doing it.
Let's hear it.
But another way to do it is through zoning. And by that, I mean, you make food truck businesses, not the special events one, but you want to operate a food truck business like Armarts is doing. You can do it as a special event so many times a year, but if you want to do it more, you have to go through a special use approval process under the zoning ordinance. That's cumbersome, it takes time, I don't know if I like that idea or not.
It's not business friendly.
It's not business friendly at all.
Seems to me something to, I, cumbersome was the word that came to mind for me as well. Seems to me that maybe, as trustee cost said, this may evolve over time. We're going to do our best here to take some sort of direction based on the circumstances we're under now. And in a year or two, if there are a proliferation of food trucks, then it needs a more cumbersome solution that seems like a better approach.
I just don't-
With a 100-foot separation, the minimum?
I just don't want to make our Central Business District guinea pigs for this.
I don't, I don't see a spot on this, I don't, who has a parking, who has a big enough parking lot in the Central Business District? Okay, so maybe the Masonic Temple has a parking lot.
You've got Riverside Foods.
But you have Sandtrap super close. You have, okay, Riverside Foods has a sizable parking lot. There, I mean, I'm looking at the Central Business, First American Bank has a, you know, like, I'm, I'm looking at the Central Business District and I don't know who, who could have one in a, in a- that wouldn't be on a street.
I think it's, I think it's safe to say-
Parking is an issue and always has.
Right, like Riverside Foods isn't going to want to put a, a truck there because their, their parking lot fills. You know, I, I feel like there's very few-
Well, it's, if you put a separation requirement, I think it's safe to say that food trucks are prohibited from downtown.
Well, depending on what it is, yeah.
Well, effectively prohibited because-
Yeah, because there's so many restaurants.
Within 100 feet of a restaurant, right?
So you, are you suggesting no buffer?
No, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just pointing out that if you do have a buffer, that is the-
You've basically negated it.
Intended or unintended consequence.
We, we do have two different types of zoning districts that would, you know, we can regulate them differently because this is a B2 commercial zoning area. And so if our determination was that it's challenging to have a regular business food truck in downtown because of all these various reasons you just listed, then we could opt to make it something that's a permitted use in the B1 districts, which would be, you know, north middle and south on Harlem and a little bit of Ogden. So you, you could designate, again, simply by zoning district as well, with or without a buffer.
So you could say there was, if you wanted to, you could say there's no buffer in this district, but there's a 100-foot buffer in this district, if we wanted to. Okay.
So do we have any consensus on this, in a, in a direction we want to give staff? Yeah, the more I think about, the more I am concerned about permanent business food trucks in downtown Riverside. But haven't really, I, I just, it doesn't seem natural.
Like the flags that we had for one of our businesses. I mean, he thought, everybody else in the business is going to have those wavy flags and that's not the case. So, I mean-
True, true, yeah.
Is that realistic?
I mean, I, again, I look at the Central Business District and I look at where anybody could potentially put a food truck and we're talking about possibly three or four if they were willing to give up their very limited parking.
And if there were no separation.
And if there were no separation, right, like, so I, I think that if we said zero separation, we're still talking about-
Very limited.
A max of three, possibly four, if those people wanted to give up all of their parking.
And to be, if, if I, if I'm following here, as it stands today, any one of them could be giving up a spot to a food truck now if they wanted to. And we, we haven't had a cavalcade of food trucks in town.
Right.
So just as the conversation evolves, this may be another thing that we do our best with the information we have today and reevaluate if a variable caravan of food trucks finds a way to park themselves downtown someday.
Yeah.
And that's just that when we're asked about it very often and when staff has worked with or explored having a food truck, there's been very little interest in coming into the central part of town just for the fact of the visibility. And so the, the greater the visibility, the more attractive it is for them to locate and have, because they do bring in audiences from elsewhere. If people know where to find them, they'll travel to go and pick something up because it's a special occasion, so.
Right, what food truck with a traveling van of customers wants to really establish in our town? There's no parking.
So, and they're here for a short time, so people can grab and go, but understandably, yes, that's the point, is that, the parking, so. And which is a concern too, just from a traffic safety perspective too, right? We want to make sure that that's managed well and, again, it goes back to that awareness of, of something new being there that we may need to offer support or respond to if there's an incident or whatever the case is.
My last comment. I just, I think we all agree that having food trucks is fun and that the residents would love to have a lot of food, food trucks in town. And I don't think that's what our discussion is about, it's about the impact on residents.
So does someone want to describe a consensus and see if everyone agrees? Or would you like me to take a shot at that?
You or I can do it, I feel like.
I, I'll, I'll take a shot at it, so, and, and I'm, a lot of assumptions in here and guesses and maybe personal biases. So I think the consensus is, number one, we want to carve out special event food trucks completely separate from a food truck business operating on private property.
Yes.
Yes.
The special event food trucks will look very similar to- The special event food trucks will look very similar to what staff has already recommended. We may tweak it a little bit on the days and all that. The food truck business licenses would be relatively, I guess, unlimited on the number of days and things like that, but they would be a permitted use. They, well, this is where it gets challenged, so no separation requirement in the downtown. We didn't really, you know, the next step is should there be a separation requirement on Harlem? I personally don't see why we would have that distinction, I think.
I don't remember agreeing to no, no buffer downtown.
Well, we didn't. I'm trying to get us to an agreement by making a statement and seeing who agrees.
I wouldn't want a, I wouldn't want a buffer in downtown.
Okay.
Because otherwise you're basically saying we can't have it.
Yeah, no buffer in downtown.
There, there seems to be a majority consensus at least, a buffer requirement on Harlem.
Do you want a buffer?
Do I want a buffer downtown for special events?
No.
No.
For permanent use.
For permanent use.
Oh, for the permanent?
For the food truck business.
Yeah, I think I do.
If you do 100, it eliminates everything completely.
It effectively, it effectively prohibits it.
Right.
In the downtown area.
And if you don't, you're looking at maybe three total possibilities.
I don't think it's terrible if it prohibits it.
I think that we need to have some sort of protection for those in the downtown area because as it has been mentioned, they get less traffic to begin with. So I think, you know, they've invested there and I think we need to be respectful of that.
So we're, so we're saying...
For the, for the commercial licenses, I think there needs to be a buffer in the, you know, central business district.
What did the chamber say exactly on this matter? Because they did ask our restaurant members this question, right?
They asked and there were not restaurant chamber members that responded.
Wonderful.
But staff went to talk to restaurant...
Yes, but I'm not, right, so they were, say, so say, you know, one said that the location elsewhere wasn't an issue, you know, but, but if they were to put, you know, put up shop in the parking lot across the street, they, they don't know what the impacts of that would be. You know, they understand that there are people that come from other places to go see these food trucks, but they recognize that if they're paying utilities, they're paying rent, they're paying taxes and other fees to do what they do, to have somebody kind of with, with the ability to operate as they wish, you know, they don't quite see the fairness in that. And so that was, you know, I'm summarizing their words, but that was the opinion of multiple restaurant owners and purveyors that, you know, if they were operating very similar menus, they, again, would be a little concerned about what that is. And if we're not regulating the ability for food trucks to operate and in any way regulating their menus, then we don't have a say over who and where they locate if they find amenable private property to do it.
So on the question of downtown buffer, we have mixed opinions from trustees. We have one trustee missing, so I would suggest that we, we don't have a consensus on that particular aspect. We have one trustee missing, so when this comes back to us, hopefully with a full board, we may end up just having to vote on whether there's a downtown buffer or not.
We could try to map it a little bit differently too and maybe do a little bit of research on as far as that point when we come back.
I would love to see, I would love to see a map or however you want to put it of which businesses would actually have the opportunity to have a food truck permanently locate on their private property. How many businesses would even, would even have a lot that they could do that?
In the downtown or...
In the dow, in the central business, in the central business, well, actually, to be honest...
Everywhere.
Everywhere. Like, how many food trucks, I mean, because I think, I, when I look at the central business district, we're talking, we're not talking a proliferation of food trucks, we're talking three or four potential spots that I can't see people...
Yeah.
I mean, they could be operating it right now if they wanted to and they're not, right? Like, it's, I, I can't see people saying, I don't know.
I think that's a very good suggestion and a good way to end the discussion for this evening.
We will do that.
If anyone else has anything else to add, please do, but I think we have a lot of good direction for staff.
We do.
And the primary piece of information next is where are potential locations for private business food trucks?
Okay.
You know, where they have room on private property, in other words, a parking lot.
Yeah, because you have to have a spot for it.
We don't have, we have lots of restaurants, but not very many parking lots in Riverside. Private parking lots in particular, so.
Exactly.
That could be informative to the point where it's easier to make a decision, I think, so.
Yeah.
So with that, is there anything else on this? Thank you.
I'm excited for grease traps.
Good, good, good discussion.
We get to talk about relating to...
Yes, so next on the agenda is discussion related to grease trap regulation.
Okay.
Manager, Assistant Manager Monroe.
Thank you. I will keep this brief. So we have experienced from time to time our blockages in our sewer systems. This isn't relating from a particular incident. We do have public works go out and occasionally investigate if there's any concerned backup area. Grease trap issues happen when particularly restaurants or other types of facilities that have grease traps that aren't servicing them properly. It is a nasty job to clean and service these spaces. It's where you place all of the extra cooking grease or other materials that are fatty and build up over time. And so by cleaning them regularly, you prevent them from overflowing into our sewer and sewer facilities and infrastructure. And so the idea here is just simply to put a very light amount of regulation on those who operate grease traps. They would essentially provide us proof of before a new restaurant or operator of a grease trap that it's been professionally cleaned, before the business license for that new space is, is issued. They would also provide us notification with either receipt of it being serviced or proof of, you know, an attestation essentially of it being cleaned twice a year. So once before they get their business license for the year and once in the middle of the year. I went out to talk to our residents or restaurants, I'm sorry, about this. They said, we're, you know, either having it regularly serviced, you know, for periods throughout the year, or we're doing it ourself. We can prove to you that we're, you know, handing off our grease to someone that's willing to give us a receipt. We are cleaning it, we're willing to have you inspect it. Do you want to see it now? I declined politely. You know, so, so there are, they're amenable to this change. You know, I don't want to invoke any, any new costs or other things if we can help it, but we really just want to protect our public infrastructure. So that's what this is designed to do. We'll come back to you with an ordinance and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for...
I think this makes a lot of sense.
Give us an ordinance.
Yeah.
Please don't ever talk about it again.
There's no one in the public to address this, so I would ask for a motion in a second to approve the ordinance.
Oh, wait, it's...
Oh, wait.
It's discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, give us an ordinance, thank you.
Thank you very much. Will do.
We're ready to vote this morning.
Consent agenda, ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
You won't have to care about it again.
Okay, trustee reports.
We got an ordinance.
Yeah, an ordinance, next, new business, an ordinance approving assignment agreement between the Village of Riverside and Maple Avenue Real Estate Advisors LLC, Assistant Manager Monroe.
Thank you. This is just a, a simple transaction. The village is interested in acquiring the properties at eight and eight and a half West Avenue. They are currently under contract with Maple Avenue Real Estate Advisors LLC. And so what this ordinance does is assigns the, the village to this agreement between the village and Maple Avenue Real Estate for that real estate purchase. So if you have any questions, you can direct on Attorney Pickrow.
Yeah, Maple, sorry, Maple Avenue Real Estate Advisors has entered into a purchase contract. They're just going to sign the contract to us. We'll be assuming all their obligations.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Before we vote, I just wanted to clarify that this is an acquisition in order to move forward the Groveland flood wall. This is a property on the river that is critical in continuing to plan for the flood wall. So, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, Clerk Stenzel.
Trustee Marchoska?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Coss?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion approved, ordinance, resolution approved, ordinance approved. Now trustee reports, C4 update, Assistant Manager Monroe.
The last you'll hear from me. So we are continuing to progress on our climate action and resilience plan. We're asking anybody with any feedback for the planned draft to submit that by tomorrow, April 4th. We're compiling that and incorporating those, the feedback we've received so far into the final version, which that will come back before the board at an upcoming meeting. We are also issued a energy use survey. It's out to the public. An eFlash went out recently. What we're doing here is creating an extension to that climate and action and resilience plan specific to our energy use. How comfortable are you in your home? You know, what are your energy bills like? Are there programs or other things, resources that maybe you need some help with or interest in? And the purpose is to get some stakeholders that have interest in talking with us a little bit more about energy use and so we can build a better plan to, to work with our residents. And then I will also mention that C4 is co-hosting the spring photo contest with Riverside 150 and there are 150 green ideas, a big library of ideas to capture on film and submit for your photo contest. We just announced, they, they just announced the winner of the winter photo contest and it's a, a great one, great examples of this type of activity. So finally, we've got the video of the Dark Skies presentation, which happened last week, running on RTV's channel and it was a really great presentation and people should check it out. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, that concludes our meeting. We do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
Can I just put in one more plug for the 150th?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. In addition to the spring photo contest, which Assistant Manager Monroe just mentioned, we do have a poetry contest running for the month of April, which is Riverside in 150 words. So it really requires a little bit of challenge there. That contest is only running for April, which is National Poetry Month. In addition, our 150 committee is inviting all community groups who are interested in participating in the festival that will be held on August 9th to come on April 9th, which is a Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM, to the Riverside Public Library and learn all about what the festival entails and talk games and, and many good things. So we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if there's nothing else, I'd ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
Motion is made.
Second.
Motion is second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, we are adjourned.